Yeah, nothing. Just paper. Just about to answer. Ken. The guy who's...
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Thank you.
Michelle was last week and all day long she was her in the office and after she left it. I was just looking at my calendar and seeing what I had going on and I was like, I think Michelle's a birthday coming up so I wanted to see when it was. Sure it was today. So I sent her an email like, I'm busy. She goes, it's no big deal. I said, it's a big deal. I said, you wouldn't let anybody else birthday by now.
Yeah, I know if I'm looking for something, I'll share it with you guys. So it's just a matter of how long I want to look for it, so.
I don't know about you ladies, but I stopped having them.
Good, how are you?
They're just overrated.
I'm just happy to have them.
Yeah, I guess that's right too. I guess I should have my blessings right.
You're here for National Health Center.
Yeah, yeah.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Always hard finding.
The goals to have.
I did see something like that, but I wasn't there, it's true, so.
How do you celebrate as a nun?
Yeah, my mother-in-law was eighty on Sunday. And that's what, like, Tom forgot and then he said, I think today's my birthday. I said, what's the date? And he told me, I'm like, yeah, today's my mom's birthday. And I'm like, he said, well, stop up and make sure I say something to her, but she's like, she's like, just back in your video. She goes, if you don't remember, she goes, I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Metzger got me a cake.
I got a heart.
You've got a heart.
I said, I have a heart. No, it doesn't.
You've got a heart.
It's a balloon, right? Listen, our relationship has limits.
I'm very glad that was clarified, by the way.
It was. It goes so far.
Well, it's a heart and cardiac arrest, so it looks like a balloon.
How he interprets it, that's up to him.
Let's hope the balloon doesn't burst at least, huh?
We hope, we hope not.
We're live.
Are you already religious? Yeah, I could be.
Good morning, everyone. Ask that please rise for the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Gracious God, you tell us in your word, do not fear, I'm with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with the righteous right hand. We take comfort and encouragement and strengthen your promise in these times. There is anxiety, fear, and unrest all around us. We, we know you hear our cries, Lord, and you will sustain us. We see an enemy that continues to spread its tentacles in one's physical, mental, and spiritual well-being, being. Let us follow in your promises to sustain us. We see violence that is getting worse, and we pray for those victims and their families. You are the God of refuge and protection. We pray for your love and protection. Father, we thank you for the good news of recent businesses choosing our valley to be their home. We know this is directly because of your will. May you bless them and help them prosper, along with all our employers in Lakeview County. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to our flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This time we'll convene the commissioners' followed meeting and ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All parents say aye.
Aye.
Aye, secured. And we'll have followed comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing that, we'll move on.
Today we have a proclamation to present for National Health Center Week from August eighth to the fourteenth. And Commissioner Maravito is going to read that.
Okay. So, and we have with us a representative, Carla Sexton, right?
Sexton.
Sexton, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Do you want to come up to the podium?
I can.
With the audience, you can just tell them your title and then you can make some remarks afterwards. What's your position there?
My name is Carla Sexton. I'm the Compliance Officer and Marketing Manager at the River Valley Health and Dental Center.
Great. We're streaming live, so I wanted to... National Health Center Week 2021 Proclamation. Whereas for over ten years, the River Valley Health and Dental Center, a community health center, has provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in Lakeview County's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on the health and well-being of the county. And whereas River Valley Health and Dental is a critical element of the provision of health care in Lakeview County, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care for many in our community. And whereas River Valley Health and Dental served as a beacon of essential resources and support in testing and treatment in the face of the global coronavirus pandemic, and will continue to offer reliable, affordable, high-quality care against COVID-19 for America's most vulnerable and underserved communities. And whereas every day, River Valley Health and Dental strives to develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, to meet the needs and challenges of our community. And whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's over 1,400 health center organizations with over 12,000 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than fifty years ago. And whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system, and the tenth anniversary of the River Valley Health and Dental Center in Lakeview County. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the commissioners of the county of Lakeview, do hereby proclaim August eighth through the fourteenth, 2021, as National Health Center Week. We encourage all residents of Lakeview County to take part in this week by visiting the River Valley Health and Dental Center and celebrating the important partnership between our community health center and the communities they serve. Signed, Lakeview County Commissioners, Scott Elmetzger, Chairman, Tony Armisere, Vice Chairman, Richard Maravito, Secretary.
Pardon me, but for those who are on the phone, please mute your phones until you're ready to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate, we couldn't have gotten as far as we've gotten in this county without your support. And we do appreciate that. And we're especially excited that this is a celebration of our tenth year as an independent community health center in our community. Thank you.
So Carla, you know, I was actually on the board that founded the Community Health Center.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons we founded it is that the emergency room at Susquehanna Health was being overrun. People were using the emergency room as a primary care doctor. And actually, the federal government and others said, listen, guys, you got to get your act together because it's costing a fortune. And what's really unique about the River Valley is that fifty percent of the board is made up of consumers, right? So that means that the decisions that are made about how healthcare is delivered gets immediate feedback from the consumers by the fact that they have fifty percent. There's no other organization in our country that democratizes healthcare. We don't, you know, it's true that we have consumers obviously on the board at the, at Susquehanna Health or Geisinger or all the other health systems, but there is not the same level of input, I don't believe, as there is. And it's in the federal statutes that the board has to have fifty percent. And it's quite literally, having this health center in our community has probably saved a lot of people's lives, especially in terms of extending life by getting preventative care. What we're trying to do now with some of our county folks in getting them to identify a problem at age forty instead of getting, having cancer at age sixty. So we want to thank you for what you do, and especially in terms of how you've helped out with the coronavirus and everything. All three of us have been there and, and we can't say enough. We're sorry that Jim couldn't be here today, but...
He had another board meeting. Absolutely. And our patients do, that are on our board, do keep us honest and grounded in the community and are the first to tell us if we're doing something wrong.
Carla, I'd just like to add, you know, we've been over there several times. And the facility is quite amazing. Commissioner Maravito and I, after visiting that facility, we went out to New Jersey and looked at another health center. But one of the most remarkable things is this, is that as, as nice as the facility is and all the services that you provide, we went and asked the people that were getting serviced there. And you know, it's very rewarding to hear them say that they're grateful. There's nothing better in the healthcare system to have your own customers say, oh, we're grateful that it's here. So, thank you. We appreciate everything you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Should we take a photo? Yeah?
Yeah.
We're going to take a photo, Carla.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Would you like someone to take it on your camera?
It doesn't matter. As long as I get it, that's all I care about.
I can email you pictures.
Okay.
But no, Carla, come. Yeah, we don't, we don't want to picture ourselves. We're bad, but we haven't gotten that bad yet. We're torturing ourselves.
Let me do one more. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Simon.
Now, you have to stay, that's the only problem.
Run.
Run, run.
Go while the door's open. Go while the door's open.
Well, I only have a parking ticket for three hours, so...
Oh geez. Does she know something we don't?
Don't give them any ideas.
I think you just jinxed them.
Okay, moving on to the informational series this week for county departments and what they do for you. Ken George is here to talk about the Maintenance Department.
Morning, Commissioners. Morning, everybody. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Maintenance Department. I would like to start off by reading the mission statement, division, and goals for the Maintenance Department, and then I'll get into some of the things that we actually do on a day-to-day basis. Mission statement for Lakeview County Maintenance Department reads, "Lakeview County Maintenance Department mission is to maintain our facilities and infrastructure at the highest level quality possible. The services provided will be in an efficient, responsive, professional manner, maintaining a safe, clean, inviting facility while keeping operations efficient. The vision is to ensure appropriate levels of operations, maintenance, capital improvements, renovations, and repairs. Fiscal, while being fiscally responsible. Maximize technologies to assist with tracking and performance. Ensure teamwork within and without side to department. Excel customer care response times. Then our goal is to balancing service with costs. Implement new technology in Maintenance Department to assure maximum productivity and efficiency. Strive for timely customer service by using technology to track response times and results. Create a well-maintained facility by using preventative, reactive, and replacement maintenance to ensure all equipment and physical assets are well-maintained. Keep all facilities free of hazards to reduce the likeliness of an illness or injuries such as maintain marred builders, proper air mount airflow through the buildings. Ensure the facilities are code compliant. Keep all life safety systems in good working order such as fire alarm, sprinkler system, and emergency P A systems. Strive for, to eliminate all and any maintenance repetitive issues. Maintain all county's security devices and systems. Maintain a clean and healthy environment for all visitors, employees. Use capital projects to allow for building improvements." And that's our mission statements, and that's what we look forward to doing. Every year, we look into the future, that's what we strive to do. Now I'll just give you some general information, what we do every day and on our department. We have a twenty-four-person strong team, and we deal with the daytime shift for our maintenance crew, and we have a nighttime shift for our custodial. Our daytime shift consists of ten people. We have a manager, supervisor, H V A C techs, electricians, carpenters, and general mechanics. Our nighttime crew has a supervisor, team leader, and our custodial workers. And then our office personnel, we have a director and one clerk. Our department is responsible for nine buildings on a full-time basis, kind of strung out all over the county. And they include the Lakeview County Courthouse, the Executive Plaza Building, Third Street Plaza, Lysoc View Pre-release Center, the County Farm, District Judge Kemp, District Judge Frye, District Judge Solomon. And two of those properties house twenty-four-hour operations that we are responsible for, called out twenty-four hours a day, which brings on its own issues and challenges at different times. We also assist with all the other county buildings at different times. For example, we assist with children and youth and all the tower sites for the D P S people that, they're all, all over the towers, all over the mountains throughout the county. I don't know how they find the places to put them, but God knows they found them and they're out there. But the guys get to go for nice rides out in the woods while they repair the H V A C and the shoes that they have out there. Our buildings, we take care of, are roughly four hundred thousand square foot of buildings and all the grounds that, that implies. We have a farm. We try to maintain the buildings and that, we aren't responsible for the farm, but we are responsible for maintaining the buildings as good as possible. And then we are responsible for all the things that you think of when you hear the word "maintenance." We're hot, we're cold, the water's not running, the fountain's not running, the torch is not flushing. We take care of all those things, the lights out, you know, all those things where, you know, we have one maintenance person up on a ladder and four people turn in the ladder to put the light bulb in, that kind of stuff. No, not really, but we take care of all those things, along with we change out larger equipment. We've installed cooling towers on roofs, we change out pumps, small H V A C systems, you name it. If it's in a building, our crews are very, very talented. They pretty much can handle any normal-sized job. If it gets too big, of course, we can't because we don't have the equipment to do that. But we also do office layouts, we do office flow, we do design lighting systems, electrical systems for them, so we get efficient use out of the space and the personnel in those areas. Some of the things that we have done on the county facilities are such as District Justice out of our Lysoc Building. We've done it, that was the old nursing home out there. We completely renovated those wings. The record retention area out there, we did as well. This room we're in now, this was a bar at one time. Where I'm standing, this was a raised deck and that kind of stuff. We renovated this and built this area here. Right now, we're doing a District Justice, building up to Lakeview Creek Road for District Justice Solomon. It's turning out really nice, has a lot of challenges for its location, but the guys are doing a fantastic job. And the support that we're getting from all the other departments, including the Commissioners on this build, is really allowing it to turn out well. At the same time, we are responsible for keeping all the buildings clean and disinfected. And as everybody knows, this last year and a half has been quite a challenge to everybody. With this COVID going around, the Maintenance Department has been responsible for finding and keeping chemicals on hand, means of fogging and cleaning and disinfecting going around several times a day, keeping the buildings as healthy and as clean and disinfected as we possibly can. I think that we have done very well knocking the virus down in our buildings. As soon as we hear something's going on, we move, we clean, we disinfect, and it seems to have worked fairly well for us. And then our life safety devices, of course, are utmost importance to us. We, we test them on a weekly basis. We have contractors come in, we follow all codes and regulations. Bad time to find out you have a problem with your fire alarm system, your sprinkler systems, your first alarms is when you have an emergency. So of course, we work really, really hard to make sure they are flawless at any given time. And then on top of that, we make sure we have short and long-term budgets for all our buildings. We try to figure out what's coming in the future, what's the new things, what's the efficient way, what's the new lighting, what's the new H V A C system, what's the best way to keep the buildings healthy, filtering systems, that kind of stuff. And the Commissioners work diligently with us to make sure that we provide a safe, healthy, efficient operation for the county buildings. We strive to cut costs wherever possible by, and still maintain a really efficient, good operations, inviting buildings where people want to come in, they're not nervous about dirty or stinky or whatever buildings. And that's pretty much all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ken, how many work orders have you completed this year and how many you still have yet to do?
We've, we've completed roughly, I think we're approaching fifteen thousand. We average between twenty-five thousand and twenty-seven thousand a year. Depends on how many big projects we get involved with during the year. Right now, we're on our, we're tied up at Solomon, so it'll probably be closer to twenty-five thousand this year.
Twenty-five thousand work orders per staff you're small.
Correct.
Guys are completing these per year.
Correct. And most of them, we're running roughly fifty-eight to sixty-two percent of preventative maintenance. So we're doing really good on our reactive and our failures. They're relatively low. So we're, we're doing pretty good.
That's testament to your office and your staff and dedication. And also the fact that you're saving taxpayers millions of dollars in the work that you and your staff have completed. But we would send this work out to private, you would have to pay a civilian wage, and it would be millions and millions of dollars.
Correct.
So you, you and your, your staff, we want to thank you tremendously for what you do.
And I'd like to add that, you know, we are going to change the name of his department because it's not maintenance. I mean, that's part of your functions and duties. But with the skilled people that you have in the H I B C, electricians, plumbers, okay, it's far from a maintenance position.
Correct.
And we recognize that, and in the future, we'll be making some corrections, not only in your department, but other departments as well.
Thank you.
Ken, you know, in addition to what Commissioner Metzger said about saving money, having the work done in-house gives us a flexibility that we never would have with outside contractors, so that when a project starts and then we have to switch gears and with the pandemic moved the sheriff down to the first floor of Third Street Plaza, you know, to be able to do that, to be able to make those changes is incredibly helpful. So we, I certainly want to have you pass on to your staff, and we really appreciate what they do. Did you say this room was a bar?
It was.
No kidding?
I think it's called the brokerage. I think it was.
Wow.
It was a restaurant all the time, too. Sebastian's, I think it was called.
Wow, you didn't, while you were working for the county, you're in the...
Yeah.
Well, you did an amazing job everywhere, so... And how many years have you been with the county, Ken?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Late as twenty-six. Been a long time.
Well, we appreciate what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
And we recognize that we have a real gem in our facilities management department.
I thank you, Commissioners, for all your support and having trust in the department to allow us to take on some of these projects and so forth.
And I encourage the public, once the Solomon Building's done, there's going to be a public display time, and you can go to the building, and you can walk through and see the quality of workmanship of that building, what your workers do, taking pride that you're just not throwing up a shack.
I think you'll find the quality is second to none.
Exactly.
And the thought process behind it, I mean, safety.
Correct. Absolutely.
You see a new building because it has to magistrate safety.
Yes.
Don't speed to get there so you get a citation. Just visit it on the, on the friendly side. No, it isn't beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have an information item that Director Dermott is going to present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wanted to bring to your attention, and really to everybody, the challenges and issues that we're having with recruiting and retention at the 911 Center. And who better to talk about that than Jeff Hutchins and Beth Baylor from 911 and T P S?
Welcome to come up.
He's going.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Beth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is nothing new. I've been talking with you guys for a while now, to the people who aren't here. I'm Beth Baylor, manager of the Lakeview County 911 Center. I'm just going to start with this statement that pretty much across the board, across the nation, there's issues with 911 and staffing due to the type of job that it is. 911 communication centers struggle with turnover rates. The national average of turnover is between fourteen and seventeen percent. This is mostly caused by shift work, stress, inability to complete training, and at times a traumatizing event that the telecommunicator cannot overcome. The physical and mental toll adds up and adds more stress to the job that already handles life and death situations, where the lives of citizens, police officers, and first responders all depend on the telecommunicator. So this is something, this is not all day, every day, but those, those instances that you have when something big happens. Think about this week in Chicago, I don't know if any of you have listened to that. I don't know if any of you have listened to that. I have in my career, not a lot of the younger people that are there now, I have handled three officer-involved shooting calls in my career. Only one at Lecombe County, two before I came to Lecombe and Prince William. And they do affect you forever. You don't forget those type of calls. So these are situations that affect all of us every day in the communications center. And I feel like my back's kind to you guys today.
That's a good one.
But I just want to go over our staffing in the telecommunications world. Our full staffing is 17, full-time and three, part-time. Our current staffing is 11, full-time and one, part-time. We have two going out on FMLA. One will be a short-time FMLA, one is going to be a long-term FMLA. We have one going to retirement on September 3rd. And I have to say a little bit about that retiree. I'll say more about him when he's here at the end of the month. But just this year alone, he has worked 450 hours of overtime, this retiree. So not only are we filling his 80 hours every two weeks, but we're going to fill all that overtime he works as well with this short staff that we have, these 11 people. And come September, we're only going to be at nine people because, well, eight people, because I have two out on FMLA and I'm going to be losing him to retirement. The training coordinator is pretty much full-time now, which is an office position. The training coordinator also does quality assurance. I'm going to be honest, quality assurance is not getting done a whole lot other than in the room, on the fly, because, you know, by the supervisor and the training coordinator, because he's continuously in the room with people. The CAD coordinator has been in the room, working pretty much full-time. Effective next week, when the long-term FMLA starts, he is going to actually be assigned to evening shift as a supervisor in the comm center until she returns. Director Hutchins and myself have also been working in the comm center to cover the hours. Currently this year, we have covered 3,048 hours of overtime in the comm center with the 11 people that we have, plus an additional 504 hours of extra time, which means paid time at straight, straight time hours. In other words, they took a vacation day that week, but they still worked extra hours. So they didn't actually get overtime for that time. So they could have been off on Saturday, but they picked up an extra shift on Tuesday. So they got straight time for that, not overtime pay for that. So that's a total of 3,552 and a half hours this year that my staff has covered extra, extra time for. And as of today, I updated all this this morning, we've had 45 hours of unscheduled leave this year for the communications center. I don't know how much I should say about that, so I'll be vague. 12 hours of that is because we had one person with an eye infection that she couldn't open her eyes. 16 hours of it is because someone was hospitalized. One was because she had a funeral to go to. And one was because he got sick from the COVID vaccine. So 12 hours of an eye illness, so she couldn't see her computer. 16 of hospitalization due to high blood pressure. And eight hours due to a funeral, eight hours due to the COVID vaccine. One hour of unscheduled leave was because somebody who had worked a double the night before was left. So needless to say, I kind of forgave that one. So that's what our unscheduled leave is for the year with our employees is 45 hours. And I'm very thankful to them because they know someone has to be in their seat. And they know we're already working this amount of time. And they know someone has to be there if they're not. So they drive themselves to work and they make sure that they're there. So this brings us to why we're here. We have a lot of staff talking, they're overwhelmed. They're talking about leaving. We have some that are, have already applied for other jobs, that have tested for other jobs. I had one come in my office last week that says she's just tired and done. We need to do something to keep the staff that we have. I'm begging you. We, we're not going to be able to cover it. We just can't. So first of all, I'm going to mention training before I ask for what I'm going to ask for. The current people that are already working and stressed out and working a ton of hours are also responsible for training while they're on the floor. This is the training coordinator along with other CTOs because the training coordinator can't train everybody all the time. So the other staff that are already working are also taking their time to train new people. And when you train someone on the phone especially, you're hooked to them continuously. You're listening to every minute of every conversation they have. You're making sure they don't make a mistake. You're making sure they say the right thing all the time. If they're not saying the right thing, you're clicking and taking over their conversation, correcting it. You're discussing the call with them when you hang up the phone. You're documenting everything on training forms. All of this is all state information that we have to input into a system for the state to go through our training records. That's where our funding comes from. You know, a lot of our funding is from the state. So this is all information that we have to document for the state. Training is 10 to 12 months, depending on the person and how fast they go through training. So not only are people working all these extra hours and doing all this work, they're also have that extra pressure of being hooked to someone who they have to listen to every second of every day, which makes the job even harder. I've done it. I did it for many, many, many years. And it's even more, it's more difficult to teach someone to do the job than it is to do the job yourself. So we're also taxing those people with that, which they get a small extra stipend for. It's less than a dollar an hour. They do get a little stipend for the training that they do. But it's just, it's mentally exhausting for them, you know, to do that continuously. I'm very proud of our staff.
Could you let the public know what a starting telecommunicator pays?
Starting pay for a telecommunicator is, I believe, 1676. 1676 an hour is starting pay for a telecommunicator. And I'm going to go back to that first sentence that I read. The physical and mental toll adds up because they're handling a job of life and death calls where the lives of citizens, police officers, and first responders all depend on the telecommunicator. Yet they start at 1676 an hour. Their first year of training, I have the list, but I'm going to say they have to go through a dozen certifications at least. Three of the newest ones that we have are three weeks of training that you have to go through and take 50, it's 50 question tests for each of them. They are not easy. They're rather difficult and monotonous because there's so many right answers. And if you fail them, you have to go back through them again. If you fail them, you have to take the whole class again. It's not, it's not easy certifications. There are many, many certifications that we have to get and keep. We renew every year, every two years, every three years, depending on which certification it is. That goes along with the trainers that I'm talking about. They have to take special classes to train. They have to take special updates and certifications continuously to keep their continuing education up in order to, they have to document when they train so that they can prove that they're training. They have to keep training records. They have to submit those to show how their documentation is in order to update their training records to, or their training certifications. This is not an easy job. There's a lot to this job. And 1676 is, I know you've all heard it lately, I can make that at Hobby Lobby. And I can make that at Sheets. I know the county offers so, so much more than Hobby Lobby and Sheets with the, with retirement and healthcare and everything else. But I think we need to do something to keep the staff that we have. I think we need to do something to entice new people, maybe more qualified people than what, no. This round, we were, we were very lucky. We had two people apply that are starting within the next two weeks. Both have experience, which we are blessed. And actually, I just got an application for a third person that has experience. To train more than two people at a time is very, very difficult. We're going to have three because we have one in training now and we're starting two more. And I'm going to spend a lot of time in the next week trying to figure out how we can hire that fourth person because she also has experience from another county out in the other side of the state. I'm not coaching from a local county. They wouldn't like that. But she already actually has three of our main certifications and that's a big deal to us. So I'm going to try somehow to figure out how to get her in and trained. The problem is, you get two people training on one shift and it's not a busy night. They answer five calls in eight hours and you didn't have any training.
Can we also elaborate once again on the volume call yearly and the emergency volume?
I did not bring that sheet with me, but from, I'll go from memory. Call volume last year, 2020, call volume, I want to say was 100 and, wait a minute, I may have that. 2020 call volume was a total of 133,895. That was total call. 911 calls was 48,894. Ten-digit calls, which we consider non-emergency calls, 56,592. Ring-down calls, which are calls from surrounding counties, from state police, from the hospitals, things like that, was 23,655. And alarm lines, which are calls directly from alarm companies, medical alarms, burglar alarms, things like that, was 4,754. For a total of 1,333,895 for 2020. Our CAD events, which are calls that we actually dispatch, was 80,061 for 2020. Which is significant. And what is different for 2021 with those, that call volume is with the new Pima legislation that went into effect with emergency protocols. We have been doing medical emergency protocols for 20 years. Pima has now enacted training guidelines for emergency police and emergency fire protocols, which means there's a line of questioning now that you have to do for every single call that comes in, whether it be medical, police, or fire. There's a set of guidelines that you have to do for every single one. And that has significantly added time to all of our calls. So we are spending more time on the phone for every call that comes in. I actually calculated it out and according to the reports I ran, it's 23.46 seconds longer per call on the average, which doesn't seem like much until you have three people in the room and you're really busy. Now, consider that per call, but you're also answering the radio at the same time you're on the phone because you're doing both, phone and the radio at the same time. And, you know, you're asking a lot of questions that we normally didn't ask before because it didn't make, make sense for us to ask these questions. And they're not necessarily questions that we would choose to ask now. But according to state protocol, we have to ask these questions. They're trying to make a, and I understand the point for Pima. I mean, that is where our funding comes from. So they're trying to make your service the same whether you call 911 in Lecombe County or in Philadelphia, or in Warren County, or Elk County, wherever you're calling from. They want the same level of service across the state. So I do understand where they're coming from on this. But it has made life a little difficult in the comm center and it has frustrated people. I can tell you, I worked a couple days this past week and it's very hard when you've done the job for 20 years and you know your policy and procedure by heart to go to that card and read it. It's very hard to unlearn what you've known for so long and reverse it to something completely different than what you're used to. So, you know, we've thrown a lot at our staff and we've given them a lot of changes. I think the person retiring, if he was 100% honest, he would say it's because of those. I mean, he's ready to go, too. He's ready to retire. He's of age. He's been around a long time, but he doesn't like those protocols. What else are we on here?
Quick question for you. So you have 48,894 911 calls. And then you had 80,061 CAD events. So you add those together to actually come up with the dispatch, right? In other words?
No, the 80,000 would be the dispatches. They could be traffic stops, they could be, you know, they could be calls that we create from a phone call coming in, or they could be an officer telling us something from the field.
So the 48,000 don't necessarily involve dispatch, they're the typical 911 call?
They're a 911 call that could be, you know, we could get eight on one crash.
Right.
So that's not, that doesn't end up creating eight CFSs. That's one.
Right.
So the CFS total does not, when I say CAD events, I have to CFS, that's a call for service. That's not always accurate because we may receive numerous calls and we're so busy with, when there's three people and you have 12 phone calls ringing because everybody that drives past the crash on the highway calls, you don't have time to document every single one of those. You get their name, their phone number, and you put them all in one call. You know, one CAD entry screen.
Right.
So that you have the names and numbers and what they saw, you know, that you're looking for a witness and you're looking for injuries. And then you let them go and go to the next call because you're looking for the person who's with the victim so that you can render aid. So you may not necessarily have an event for every one of those calls that you receive. So the 80,000 is calls that you actually put in and dispatched and calls from like police officers in the field when they call you and say, I'm out on this person or I'm out on a traffic stop.
So do your dispatchers or communicators, he goes by the, an accident, he reports it. I go by the same accident. Do you say, hey, no, I got the call? Or do you listen to that caller as well?
Oh, no, we listen to that caller as well. We confirm it's the same accident.
Okay.
Always confirm it's the same accident, same location. Especially, it's so easy to get an accident as the result of an accident that you can't, you can't just blow it off and say, yep, we got that, goodbye. We can't do that.
So you have to hear?
Absolutely.
20 people that are calling in the same accident?
We always confirm it's the same accident. And the easy way to do that is, what kind of vehicle was it? You know, if you have to do that. And then my next question to you would be, did you stop? First of all, if you said no, you kept going, you really have not a lot more, you know, was anything on fire? Was it overturned? What is your name? What is your phone number? And we let you go. Because the next caller calling may have stopped and then we may be able to get more information on the person that sent her. But we always get basic information from every single caller. Just in case you were a witness. You may have witnessed it, but you didn't stop. So, and then we mark you as a witness so the police can contact you if needed.
The Pima protocols and the guidelines. So you may know the location, but you have to ask a series of questions related to location?
We always have to ask and verify the location. That's an internal policy, whether Pima told us to do that or not. That's an internal liability for us.
So what are some examples of the protocol questions that you could make them?
Well, in Lecombe County, for example, to us, we know there's no huge high rises.
Right.
But one of the protocol questions that you need to ask is how many, how many floors? If a house is burning in Lecombe County, I know in my mind, there's nothing larger than four floors. So they're going to get the same response no matter what, but you have to ask how many floors. So it, just goofy things like that. They don't ask things as soon as their protocols as we do. Like if we have a robbery, we get, you know, number of suspects, sex race, direction of travel. We've always gotten that stuff very quickly and got that call out where the protocols go injuries first. Well, we're dispatching the call right away. We always ask, is anyone hurt? Because an ambulance is dispatched immediately if somebody's hurt. But they go through a series of, was anybody choked or assaulted? We just ask really quick, is anybody hurt? Get the ambulance out. And then we get number of suspects, sex race, direction of travel. So what I've done to kind of override that is create a policy to say on these types of calls, we will get location, weapons, intoxication, the officer safety questions, descriptions, direction of travel to get them out. Because there's some calls, especially in Williamsport, when you dispatch it, they're there in 45 seconds. If you go through the protocol, you don't have a description before they get there. So we've had to write a policy to override the policy, if that makes sense to you. Because we have to serve the officers and the public, no matter what the protocol says.
But then you have to go back and get the answers to the questions.
But then you go back and, and then you go back and answer the protocol questions for Pima. We definitely do go back and do the protocol. But we get what we need first. So we've had to do a policy to, to avoid going to the protocol. We get our information first and then we go answer the protocol questions. We never skip the protocol.
Right. So why are you here?
I am here because, sorry, I guess I shouldn't have been.
No more than that. We need that information.
I am asking you as the commissioners and the general public, I guess, I would, I would like to ask for a bonus for my telecommunication here. Until we get back up to staffing and let me throw this out there as well. I mandate 12 hours of overtime every two weeks. They have a sign-up list. They sign up on a rotating basis, 12 hours of overtime every two weeks so that they know what they're working in advance. They can choose it to work into their schedule. They can choose it to work into their schedule, what's left over after they do their twelve hours, which there's always plenty left over. Um, if they wish to volunteer to work it, they sign up to volunteer to work it. If it all doesn't get volunteered for, they get forced to work it. Um, I'm not always a very popular person when it comes to that. And I'll be honest, a lot of times Hutch and I are trying to pick up those hours so that nobody gets forced because they're already working very, very hard. We are trying to, we are doing that so that people are not getting forced. And if people are getting forced, we're trying to ensure it's no more than four hours. We'll pick up the others so that they don't get forced more than four hours. So what I'm asking for is for my, my telecommunications that are there, um, I would like to have a, a bonus for them quarterly. Um, I would, I'd like to ask for fifteen hundred dollars for them quarterly as a bonus for them to try to keep them happy, keep them in, you know, invested in the center. Keep them to, to stay in the center. I need, I need them to stay. It's, I would consider it a retention bonus. I really need them to stay there. If we keep getting more leave, I don't know how we're going to fill the seats. We can't, it would be a liability to cut down to two people. Um, we're that, we work three, three on a shift now on the midnight and day shift. And even on the midnight shift, if we cut down to two people, it's a huge liability. We're running four radio channels and answering the phone for two counties. We, we can't go lower on staffing. So we need to fill those seats. And if, if there's anything we can give them to help them, to retain them in their current position, um, I, I'm willing to ask for it and I'm asking for, you know, I've worked the numbers and I've looked at things and I would like to ask for a fifteen hundred dollar quarterly bonus for my current staff.
Can I make a few comments? Go ahead. In my life, I have experienced burnout. And burnout, when that happens, you don't care about your family, you don't care about your wife, you don't care about your work, you just don't care. And that can last anywhere from a day and it can last anywhere from a month. And this is not a department where I believe, and I, and I, and I hear your cries, okay? And especially when we start to get down into that eight people and you're worried about making a shift of two. If someone needs to go to the restroom and other calls come in, this, this is, this is very, very serious. You know, right now, there are ten thousand jobs available through the ten million jobs available in the United States. We have seven million people that are on unemployment. And that little extra is supposed to be eliminated next month. So maybe you'll get more prospects. I don't know. It was a terrible mistake what we did, what the government did, but it did. And hopefully that can, can help turn some things around. When it comes, and this is not political, this is fact. When it comes to talk about the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage and you're, you're paying somebody for all that responsibility at sixteen, sixteen, uh, sixteen sixty-one or whatever that was, uh, or seventy-six, um, it makes you wonder. You know, should I be flipping the hamburger instead of having this responsibility? Uh, this is going to be a crisis, uh, throughout the private sector as well. That skilled people that are making a reasonable wage of eighteen to twenty dollars, twenty-two dollars an hour are, are going to be demanding raises. Which is going to put a tremendous amount of stress in the public sector. And a lot of stress on the taxpayers. Who am I concerned about? What's concerned about are senior citizens that earn fixed incomes, that rely upon their social security. The inflation rate is skyrocketing. Go to the grocery store. You're paying more now, a dollar more a gallon for gas. And their social security increases are not going to co, you know, compen, be compensated for that ex, expense. Um, major concerns that are going to have to be addressed by the, the county commissioners, uh, I hear you loud and clear. I can also say I, uh, appreciate your saying a bonus versus a pay raise because a bonus will not go on their, their base pay. You know, as a, uh, as a business owner, one of the, we're talking about the forty-five hours of unscheduled leave, which is unbelievable that, that your people, you know, they're, they're, they're awesome.
They're very dedicated people.
Uh, one of our biggest concerns as a business owner is every morning, you know, at six o'clock in the morning, as soon as we hear the phone call, we know there's probably an employee that is going to call in sick. If we don't have the staff to put them in, we beg them to come to work, you know? But, uh, if they don't, you know, owners go out or they have service failures. You can't have service failures in your business. Okay? And so I want to thank you and Hutch, all your staff honestly, but especially you're dedicated, uh, to the center. Uh, you put in a lot of hours. And, um, I appreciate you having the courage to come here before us and talk about it. And I'd, uh, also like to, to thank the retirees. You know, I can name a number of them. I won't, but they've come, worked part-time to help us, you know, uh, our critical status. And, and they're tired, you know, they're retired, they, they want to take a break. And, but yet they came up, stepped up to the plate and, uh, helped us out. But, um, they're, they're done now and I, and I understand. And I want to thank them as well. So we do have a problem here. Uh, it's a major one. And I know it's not the only department, but I would have to say it's the most critical department.
Go ahead. Beth, the, um, the bonus quarterly fifteen hundred. Are you proposing that for four quarters or how long, how many quarters are you proposing?
It, it's going to be at least four quarters. I think we need to come up with a, a staffing. I think it's something that we'll need to work out the definite number for. I think we're going to have to go below a certain amount of mandated overtime before we can get rid of it. It'll be a year. I mean, the, the people that we have now, I have one partially through training, I have two starting brand new. It'll be a year before they're trained and counted as staffing. They'll be partially trained, you know, as, as they go along, but to be fully trained, it'll take them close to a year to be fully trained.
So theoretically, we have four people that potentially may come in. Two, two and the, well, three, I think.
Well, I have three and then I have a fourth one that I would love to figure out how to get her in if I can figure out how to train her. Yes.
Um, so then theoretically, if, let's say for the safe argument three, it would take us from eight to eleven. Assuming that we can keep all eight people. If we can't keep all eight people.
That's the problem is keeping, yeah.
Then we have a problem. I mean, we have a problem, but they have a worse problem. Um, the cost. Right, right, yeah. The cost for this can be reimbursed to the county through the nine-one-one.
The, the Pima money is always there. I mean, it's, it's not going to cover everything forever, but yeah, the Pima, I mean, I, I've gotten no notification that my Pima money is going down.
Right, right. We can't count on it forever, but for the immediate future of say the next two years, there's a more than good chance that the legislature is going to keep the money. So there's a good chance we'll be able to get reimbursed for the money.
Absolutely.
Right. Now, the other thing is that, and you may or may not know this, we still have one point six million dollars left from COVID money. Part of the burnout that your staff is feeling is obviously due to, is due to what's happened in the last year. But we have those funds too. Um, but there's actually a good chance that we can get reimbursed. So that, that would take care of, um, in your mind, would take care of retaining people. What about attracting people? Are we okay? It seems that we must be.
This, this round, I, I think was amazing. I mean, the, the applicants that we got this round was really, really promising.
Okay. And it's possible, I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's possible with the change in what's going to happen with unemployment compensation, that we may see more people come out looking for work. And maybe these folks who came out are getting a jump on it. You know, they're, they're, they're saying, hey, you know what? I'm going to make a career out of this and so forth. Okay, so that, so how many people is that on the retention bonus? It's fifteen hundred times.
Um, there would be, including the training coordinator and the CAD coordinator, which they're both working in the center. So with your blessing, I wouldn't include them. Um, it would be twelve people.
Twelve people, okay. I have another question at this time.
Uh, real quick, something else I would like to add in, Commissioner Mesker, before you speak. Um, I was looking at a recruiting bonus as well. If we're not going to touch the base pay, I would like to offer a sign-on bonus to do with the, to, to entice the people for, to come and stay. And I would like that to be, um, I was looking at five thousand dollars, but it's not something I want to just give them five thousand dollars. I would like to do, um, a thousand dollars to be paid upon the completion of call-taking training. A thousand dollars to be paid upon the completion of police radio, which would be county and city both. And then a thousand dollars to be paid at the completion of fire radio, which would be the promotion to a telecommunicator too. So a thousand dollars of each of those increments. And then the, the final two thousand for the total of five thousand to be paid one year later after they've done a year of service. Um, if that is something that maybe we can put into place, since right now we're not looking at a, a base pay, something that maybe would help with recruiting and, and keeping a trainee. And, and I'll give you the example of that. I just had a trainee that we had for five months that we put a lot of time and effort into. And she finished from training and she went back to a desk job day shift, Monday through Friday. So we put five months into her and, and she was great. She was really good. I was really sad to see her go because she did a great job. But, you know, maybe if we would have done, been able to do something, which we were in the works of, of doing the, the steps, you know, the telecommunicator and doing the little pushes along the way, but, um, I, that wouldn't have mattered, I don't think, with her. She wanted to go back to a Monday through Friday position. She didn't want to do ship work.
I think, I think the point that you made earlier about it was fourteen or seventeen percent turnover. That's on a national basis. And, and if recalling our situation, I think it's much higher than that. If you take the re, retirement included in that.
Ours has been really high because of retirement.
It's been very high. And, and that's something that we can't ignore because you're, it just seems like we, we put our communicators and the ones, um, there are many times where they don't make it.
No, they do not. It's a very difficult job.
And so each time, so when you're talking about the signing of bonus, uh, many times after the first one, that they're, they're leaving. Maybe after a couple of days. And then, and then after the, the second, uh, training schedule, you know, the odds of them staying become more and more.
Right, and that's why I don't want to like hand them money to come because they could stay for two weeks.
But they, but they do leave before, many leave.
Many of them leave before they're done with the phone position. Because they realize once they're in the room answering the phone, how chaotic it can be. And then you start adding in the radio because while they're on phones near the end, you have them start listening and documenting the radio and they realize they can't do both. And that's when they leave. Um, we are now in the process of doing the call-taker position, which if they're good at the phone and they don't like the radio, they can be a call-taker. Um, so we're in the process of making that change right now as well.
Yeah. So if I have this correct, fifteen hundred times twelve people is eighteen thousand a quarter, times four quarters is seventy-two thousand for this year. On the pretend recruiting bonus, you said a thousand dollars would be paid on completion of the.
Call-taker.
Of call-taker. How long does it take to complete that?
Um, from the time you come in until you're signed off as a call-taker is usually four to five months because you have to do all your classroom training and then your three hundred hours of in-the-room training to be a call-taker and then pass your test.
And then you said a thousand for the city-county police module.
Which is probably another three months. You have three hundred hours on county and then usually eight, a hundred and eighty hours on city.
Okay, and then the fire radio.
Three hundred hours.
Is three hundred hours, so that would be.
And usually before you go to fire, you bounce back and forth between city and county by yourself to be proficient. And then you start your training on fire.
So, so theoretically.
It'll be a year by the time you're finished with that.
So to address Commissioner Meser's point that just came out, this person who had been there, who just left, we would have paid the thousand dollar bonus after four or five months.
Mm-hmm. She would have, if she made it to the point that she got to the telecommunicator or through the training process of phones, which she had just been signed off on phones when she decided to leave, she never started police radio.
So, and I, and not weighing in on whether we should do it or not, but I think we should make sure we look at the timing of it so that we don't end up spending money on folks who we think are going to make it there. But that's, okay. So that's the five thousand for the recruiting. Now, I'm sorry, did you want to say? If they get the five thousand, if they get the recruiting bonus and they're here, are they also getting the fifteen hundred?
No.
No. Okay. So that recruiting bonus in your mind applies to new hires only?
Right, which would go basically for two years. They would get the five thousand over a two-year period.
Oh, that's, because paid after the completion of.
The two thousand is paid after the second year.
Okay, so that's, okay, I hit one year.
So the bonuses for a new person coming on would be the five thousand dollar bonus.
So we're really, we're really putting out three thousand in the first year and if we get them to stay a second year, another two thousand. The reality is if we can get them to stay two years, they're probably going to be comfortable and confident enough that they actually could stay longer.
And then if we're not to staffing, which I hope we would be by then, they would then start getting the fifteen hundred dollars totally.
Okay. And, and that retention, recruiting bonus, is there anything you see in the regulations that disallow payment of that or that's also allowed to be reimbursed?
It would be considered part of salary. It's reimbursable.
Oh, that's, it's also important to recognize that with the CARES money and the additional ARP money that we have not decided how to allocate, that, um, her request would not, would not, uh, be out of our general fund.
It would very much, I would very much appreciate it being out of that fund. Out of the CARES, so.
Although, yeah, the only thing we need to check is if we.
But down the road.
If we take it out of the fund, it can get reimbursed from Pima. If we take it out of the ARP, I don't think we can get reimbursed.
Correct. If you take it out of that, Pima won't reimburse it.
We may want to take it out of the general fund.
CRG P roll can be, can be utilized as well.
But, but if, if. If you, if you look back in history, you know, uh, at least in my ten years, we keep losing people. I mean, it's just the way it is. And so that's telling us that we have to make some structural changes. History's telling us that, okay? It's not just because of coronavirus.
No, it's not.
Okay, that, that, that just happened last year. So, uh, those are the things that we'll have to address. And, uh, we have a short period of time to do so. You know, and this, this will give you, you know, I don't want to argue for you. I'm just saying that, that the facts are the facts.
Yeah, we're, we're in a critical situation. We're actually a little beyond critical.
Yeah.
With the FMLA is coming up and, and the, um, I have another staff member that's, that I won't speak too much about now, but it's not in a good way either medically. So, um, we're probably very well going to lose her for a while as well.
So, so one of the concerns, and then obviously three is that discuss it, but. And we want feedback from the public and we want feedback from, from whoever wants to give feedback to it. But, uh, you're obviously in a crisis.
We are.
One of the, one of the issues is, I think frankly, that there are a lot of, um, other county employees who are also feeling burnt out. It was a two-edged sword that this working through the pandemic. On the one hand, we were blessed as public sector workers to continue to have a check that came through so that we didn't have the stress of figuring out, how am I going to make the mortgage payment? How am I going to make the credit card payment? How am I going to make the car payment? How am I going to get food instead of on the table? Right? The people who weren't working had that stress, but then they didn't have the stress of coming in and possibly catching COVID from a colleague or whatever. So, um, the question is, is there a way for us to understand that there are, uh, pros and cons from both sides and, uh, and also recognize that we don't only deliver nine-one-one for this county, we have responsible for delivering it in Sullivan County. And we get paid to do that by contract. So when we, when our ship sinks here and we sink the ship in Sullivan County, we have uneven force. It's a problem. It's one thing for, you know, we, obviously none of us are going to allow the, the nine-one-one to, to collapse. You can't, I mean, it's just not, it's not, it's like calling, you're having.
We're replying to the comm center.
But that's worth noting, too, that we have responsibilities by contract.
It goes hand in hand with the defund beast mode. To say that statement and to believe in it is insane. It's the same thing. We need to make sure 911 is funded, that it's funded properly. They, they service our public. 911, you have to make sure the people are there to make sure that calls are answered. It's life and death. This is a crisis situation. It's, it's, in my opinion, it's not up for debate. It's common sense. It's common sense to give you folks what you need, to come to your job and do it right. A starting wage is 1676 an hour, but that kind of responsibility, in my opinion, is way too low. Way too low for what you do. I bet out there, it's extremely stressful. You handle life and death calls. And I don't want to be on the end of somebody to say, well, I'm sorry, we had to put you on hold because we didn't have staff and we couldn't get your loved one. That's unexcusable.
That's my fearsome.
That's unexcusable. And, and the day and times we live in, we have to make sure, this is public safety of the, of the most important kind. Talk about our seniors. They have to make sure if they call 911, we're going to be there for them. So in my opinion, we have to do what we have to do to make sure that you get the funding you need so this, this isn't a crisis anymore. It's, it's not just here, it's nationally.
It is nationally.
And do I agree with what Center County did? Just throwing $5 an hour? No. That doesn't solve the situation. But we have to listen to your people. They're under, they're so dedicated. You saw that in, in the, their time off. They come to work when they don't want, when they feel like they can't come to work.
Correct.
They're there. And they're true warriors.
And you should explain what, what Center County did.
I will in a minute. So with that said, we'll get this resolved and we're going to have to do so immediately. Because you go from 17 down to 11, down to eight. That's beyond crisis mode.
Yeah, I have people working 32 hours of overtime a week.
Yeah.
A week, not a pay, a week.
It affects them and their families and, and their mental health. And it's not right.
Their physical health as well.
Right, it's not right. So we will, we will rate this show.
Thank you.
Well, Center County, Center County recently made an announcement. They were sent, they send $5 per hour, increased wages towards their 911 operators. How they're going to sustain that over a period of time because that's going to be tax dollars is beyond me. That affects the entire state because other states, other counties and their parts of state look at that and they're starting to do knee-jerk reactions. York County just did it. I don't think that's the right solution. I think what you and Hutch have done, you've sat down, thought outside the box. You've brought solutions to us. And now we're bringing that to the public. And we've worked on this together, side by side, to get this resolved. And, and I think we're, we're very close to doing so. And we can do that within the next week or so. But we do want to hear from the public. Ultimately, they're paying the bills. But I know, I know they want to make sure that 911 calls are answered. Anyone with common sense wants that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Seth, did you say you have people working 32 overtime, 32 hours of overtime a week?
Some of them, yes.
Some of them. How, how long has that been happening, do you think? I mean, is it?
Beginning of the year, middle of last year.
Since the middle of last year? So they're putting in 72 hours a week?
There are times, not, not every time, but there are times.
How, how many people do you think are doing that and how often? Is it just occasional?
Three people.
Three people?
Three people mainly put in that big of a chunk. And I would say twice a month.
Twice a month?
And that's usually only if someone else is on vacation. I need, we only allow one person per shift on vacation. We've actually been really blessed that they haven't, we really haven't had one person from each shift on vacation. Everyone's being very good about their, taking a lot of time off. Everyone's been taking time off, which is good because they need to. I would, I never deny it, ever deny time off. But they've been kind of rotating it around, you know, making sure that everybody's not overlapped. I know September, there's a lot of leave. And it looks like a lot of leave, but it's not. It's the FMLA and the retirement that make our calendar look really bad for September.
And the public also has to remember, every time there's a police call out, that is their lifeline.
It is.
That is their lifeline. If, if they can't, if you're not there to call them and they, they have an emergency out there. And we just had more police officers killed in Chicago the weekend. A mother, two-month-old baby, 29 years old. Her partner shot in the eye. He's, he's fighting his life. And if they can't get help because the bad guy is shooting at them because they can't get a hold of 911, it's unexcusable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy Clemens, Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to ask your approval for the Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report for invoices due through August 18th, 2021, to be paid on August 11th in the amount of $1,162,011.17. And you will note that that is $33,195.56 more than the report that you have in front of you. There was a Century Engineering, I believe, bill for the bridge bundling program that got missed somehow by planning and it was due here at the beginning of the month. So we're adding that in to get that paid as soon as possible. And that's covered by the $5 fee funds.
I don't have any questions.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
All fair side. Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Roxanne Rico to approve Personnel Actions.
Mary Roxanne.
Good morning, Commissioners. In the Sheriff's Office, we have Sheri Elhook as a full-time replacement, Clerk III, Pay Grade IV, $16.51 an hour effective August 22nd, 2021. In the courts, we have Joanne Mattie as a part-time replacement tipstaff, Pay Grade I, $10.18 an hour and not to exceed 1,000 hours annually effective August 16th, 2021. In the Sheriff's Office, Glenn A. Murchison Jr., full-time replacement Deputy Sheriff, Pay Grade DS, $18.34 an hour effective August 23rd, 2021. At prayer release, Melinda Sutton as a full-time replacement resident supervisor, Pay Grade V, $15.37 an hour effective August 16th, 2021. And finally, in maintenance, Ruby Saban as a full-time replacement custodial worker, Pay Grade II, $11.91 an hour effective August 16th, 2021.
Any questions? Are you ready to have a motion to accept the replacement positions?
I'll move to approve.
All fair side. Aye, so carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Moving on to action items. My attune is not here, so Director McDermott is going to do 6.1 through 6.3.
Commissioner, seeking your approval on an agreement with Don Martino for professional services for 2021. It's a budgeted item. He is providing co-council services for a specific case not to exceed $20,000 on me.
Any questions on this professional service agreement? It is a budgeted item for 2021. Are you ready to have a motion?
A second.
All fair side. Aye, so carried.
Sounds a little weird, but seeking your approval on the list of contracts that I approve, $10,000 of all.
Okay, and you're listed there, all 11 of them?
Yep, standard bits.
Any questions on any of them? Okay, are you ready to have a motion?
A second.
All fair side. Aye, so carried.
And then 6.3, seeking your approval on our letter of engagement for the provisioning of NG 911 services. Beth can add to this if you'd like.
It's all, it's, it's complicated. To say the least.
So Beth, Beth, what is this? This is a contract for provisioning for NG 911 services with Pima.
It's with, it's with Pima. Pima is actually putting, putting the bill, for lack of a better way of putting it, for next G, next-gen 911 services. They're doing a statewide rollout for next-gen 911. It'll be the new call delivery, 911 call delivery statewide system. They're the ones, they have their own consultants. They have their own contact is the one handling all the equipment installation. We basically have to put in our back room a rack for them that they supply. We have to supply the power to the rack. We need two receptacles installed. We've already had our inspection and they're coming us a check for the 2,500 to install the receptacles that need installed. So it's all their equipment, all at their cost. We're playing the electricity and then we get the new call delivery services.
And so, so for the public, we've been dealing with this for a little while now. And NG, I wasn't quite sure what that stood for in that journey.
Next gen.
What exactly is the technology of next-gen?
Next-gen technology will be able to deliver more specific call type or call location delivery. More GIS pinned down to exact location according to GIS locations. Also supposed to be, I say suppose, if Barry's watching this, he'll shoot me. Barry should be the one speaking on this, not me. Or Garrett, I should say Garrett or Tyler now. But Barry still has his hands in this as well. But not just length and long, but also height. Like if you're on the fourth floor, it should be able to tell you now that you're on the fourth floor. Eventually, which I'm completely against, video. Of course, text to 911 is part of this. We already have that part of it, part of the 911. But it'll also be integrated into this system as well. It'll move from where we are now into this next-gen system as well. We'll have statewide mapping. We'll have statewide, if we get a call that actually, eventually, it'll be countrywide. You know, if we get a call that was supposed to end up in Georgia somehow, we'll be able to know exactly where it was supposed to be in Georgia. We'll be able to get GIS information for, you know, this is the comm center in Georgia that it was supposed to go to. So it's all, it's all about road segments and how exactly everything is put in for every neighboring jurisdiction statewide. We'll have everything in the state.
And I think it's important to understand that Beth said she's against video.
Absolutely.
And, and for a telecommunicator to be seeing video of a police officer being shot or kids, this is not something that we need them to, you know, witness. But it, it's moving in that direction and we need to try to fight that.
Absolutely.
I, every conference I've been to in 10 years, I've been against that. Unfortunately, we're not, you know, we can voice our opinion, but we're not the one to make the final ruling on that.
What's the rationale for the video? Is it to help first responders?
So we can get better descriptions and directions of travel. And citizens that call aren't always, they're excited and they're not trained to, to look at what we need. You know, they, they see a person that has a red hat on. Well, it's not red, it's black. They're excited, they're in crisis. We're trained to defuse crisis. So the thought of video is we see exactly what's going on. We can give more accurate, real-time information. We don't have to ask a question, wait for it, and we see it.
Conceptually, it makes sense, it's just.
It does make sense, but it's also very traumatic to a telecommunicator. They don't, they don't leave it out. So, so that's what that is.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side. Aye, so carried. Thank you.
Do you want to do 6.6, while?
Yeah, can we just jump to Beth's last?
Since I've spent way too much time with you today.
So Beth has 6.6.
This is a vote on amendment to the agreement for our North Fountain Shelter. It's on our tower site, it's the state tower site. We do have a shelter there and we're on the state tower. It's to renew the agreement with Mr. Shoemaker, the owner of the property, at $500 a year. And every other year, we'll be delivering him four loads of stone for the roadway to the tower site. He'll, he'll take care of spreading it, everything, we'll just deliver it. And it is a budgeted item.
Okay, any questions? Are you ready to have a motion to accept action aid? 6.6. Ten more minutes.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Beth.
6.4 with Jason York voting on a ward of gas well installation. Jason, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner, before you, for your approval today is the award of the gas well installation modification project. We're seeking your approval to award it to R&amp;L Development in the amount of $1,499,466,000. The, this, right out of the gate, just explained, this is closure funds, this is not out of our 2021 budget. This is a project that, another phase of the project I described to you earlier in a meeting where we are prepping to close 11 acres of old landfill cells. This particular bid's going to have an additional 28 gas wells. And there are going to be 62 pumps that we're going to put in, new wells plus additional wells, so we can keep the liquid pumped out of our wells so that we can increase our gas production for the CoGen facility. We're also going to be including, the pumps are going to run off the air compressors. So we're going to have that. Around 20, about 25,000 feet of piping that'll transmit the air pressure plus the leachate back out of the pumps. So this is a fairly large project. I would like to give a shout-out to the use of Penn bid on this. We were able to get, I think, seven significant bids. One was way out of, way out at 5 million, but the general pricing was between 1, 2.4 million to 1.499. So most of them were around what the estimate of our contractor, our engineering firm had thought. So it's, it's all in line and we're excited to get this next phase of the project moving forward.
So Jason, for the public, when we say closure funds, that's money over the last 30 years that we've been putting aside from each ton of waste that comes in for, that we're required to do to, to close the landfill, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And, um, with the increase in the gas production, you're gonna sell that, right?
Correct. We'll be able to supply the recycling center for boilers, we'll be able to have additional, uh, gas. We're just now, we're still coming up a little short on what our normal gas production is. So this is gonna be a huge boost to get us up to what EPP and us, what we, uh, what we need to see as our numbers.
And do we have experience with R and L development? I believe we do, right?
Yes, sir. They, R and L completed the old construction last year and they also completed the forced main down to Greg Township.
They did a good job.
Any problems?
No, sir. No, and they're, um, they're working here now currently on that first bit of the project with putting in the clean outs, uh, and all that stuff and leachate and gas lines down along the headers. So, no, they're good fun to work with.
They did the forced main and what was the other thing you said they did?
Field twelve, sir.
Field twelve, right, okay.
Okay, good, good news.
I'll move to approve the gas well installation.
I'll second.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, commissioners.
I'll go second.
Six point five with Shannon Rosman, voting on amendment to agreement for WMWA Act thirteen.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Before you is, it's just an amendment so we can pay out, uh, according to the original contract. Um, this is for the Mosquito Valley project that Williamsport Municipal Water Authority was doing along with some other repairs and there was just a lot of, uh, holdup with the, with the project. Um, the portion that we were helping them, them fund, uh, was completed in January, which was past the contract date. So, this is just to allow for payment of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's a formality.
Was this the embankment as well?
Uh, I'm not sure. I wasn't around for the original project. Um, I just know that they were doing the replacement and because of the bridge replacement, they were doing this also because of the utilities connected to it, so, um, and there was just a lot of, um, holdup with the actual roadwork and things.
This was the one that was vital to the city of Williamsport water supply?
Yeah.
Yeah?
This is, I believe it's in Armstrong Township.
Right. People don't realize that the city gets its water from the reservoir that the water authority has in Armstrong Township, which is huge.
Yes.
And you're right, Commissioner, if that collapses, basically, we have thirty thousand people without water.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of, many people don't realize that most of their utilities are not necessarily produced in there. The water isn't necessarily from the municipality. Usually it's from a neighbor. And so you have to, you have to work with that. And especially where you're coming from, your reservoir, you really have to make sure that, um, you maintain those facilities.
This has been, I mean, when I was in the state legislature, this was, I was touring this facility, trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for it and that's over ten years ago.
And there's another example of county intervention led to the fact that, uh, they didn't have to raise their taxes, what, I mean, substantially.
And this, yeah, and we're using, um, Act thirteen hundred for this. So this was a budgeted item, it's just that it, the project took longer than expected.
I mean, there are other sources, the rate payers, I think, are...
Oh, yeah, this isn't the full project cost.
Right, not the full project cost, yeah.
Not by any means.
But, you're right, we helped out.
Yeah.
Okay. Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thanks, Shannon.
Um, also, while I'm up here, I just want to let you know that, um, a couple weeks ago, somebody decided they had to spray paint our wood hick on the Riverwalk.
Heard.
Yeah. They, some, some kind of...
Fairway.
Yeah.
We had some unfortunate vandalism on the Riverwalk.
Yeah. Um, the wood hick is the bronze statue of the lumberjack up there and, um, so, and our staff do keep, we work a lot with the Riverwalk, we, we, um, do keep up with what's going on there if there's any maintenance issues. Our staff use it a lot also, so they always contact the city if there's something going on. Um, but the wood hick was kind of our responsibility, so, um, our staff went up, took pictures, we investigated the best way to clean it, cause it is a bronze statue. Um, so we then went out and purchased the, the cleaning items and just yesterday, we were able to, we were thankfully able to remove the red paint and monikers that were painted on it and, um, and we're gonna keep stuff on hand. Hopefully this never happens again, but, but luckily, uh, they were able to do that and they also did a pre-treat, a pre-treatment to the statue to hopefully prevent other staining from occurring.
Thank you to you and your staff for doing that, stepping up and...
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we continue to have these type of individuals in the community that want to do good things.
Right. Well, and luckily, my two staff going up there for a few hours to do the cleaning, um, we did get a, we did get a, a cost estimate from somebody who does it professionally. It was nineteen hundred dollars.
Wow.
Just, I mean, so, you know, it was a lot cheaper for, for my guys to run over and, and, uh, wear shorts for the day and clean, and clean it. So, um, uh, yeah, so we'll, uh, we'll try and keep an eye on that. We'll, we also let, you know, the local police know that, and just to keep an eye out.
Absolutely.
So...
I got an update from your guys this morning and they sent the before and after pics and I just haven't had a chance to share them with you.
Okay.
Yeah, they were gonna send it forward to you all, so I wanted to, you, them to show to you and, and we were also, uh, sending it to the, the city police so that they have an idea who, which party may have been responsible for it.
Yes, we have visitors entering our community in the next two weeks.
Very important that we keep, cause that is a well-used trail. Yeah, it's important that we keep it clean and, and presentable.
Thank you so much.
The wood hick was, was created by Pam Barner, the Muncie artist. Does she know that this happened, I wonder?
I would doubt it, unless she's a frequent walker up there or somebody told her.
Yeah, maybe I'll call her, I didn't know that.
But, um, but it was, we were luck, we were actually lucky that we forgot to wax it. Um, after it was installed, there is a pre-treatment that you can put on to help it with, uh, preservation. We purchased that and this time, as soon as it was cleaned, we waxed it, so hopefully we'll be able to prevent some of the additional things. But we have now, we have, we have what we need to, to keep it clean, so hopefully this doesn't happen again in the future, but we do have it on hand now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Six point seven, Director McDermott, voting on agreement of sale between the Icone County and City of Williamsport.
Commissioners, uh, seeking your approval on the agreement of sale between the, the county and the city. Essentially, two weeks ago, we talked about this. It was, I guess, tabled or whatever until this week. And this is the land swap for the, the property under Executive Plaza and the parking lot and the property that is under the parking garage. And this is that agreement as...
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agreement?
Oh, I'll move to approve.
I'll second, and this time, long discussion.
Okay. Well, so, Mr. Solicitor, you want, let me, let me just read a statement into the record here. This commissioner is of the opinion, the city of Williamsport and the county should swap the land beneath the Third Street parking garage owned by the county, which is termed county real estate in the document, and the land beneath Executive Plaza owned by the city termed city real estate. The city and the county should swap the land so that each is able to sell or transfer or keep the land with full rights to the land to do with it what each group of elected officials believe is proper. This is common sense. The county in the opinion of this commissioner should then sell the building, which is something we've been trying to do for multiple years. Uh, transparency is critical on all decisions affecting taxpayers. The issue in this commissioner's view is not whether to swap the land, the issue is to ensure that the swap is done in a transparent manner. It's very important that, that everyone has the information that's available to make an informed decision and the public understand the facts too. I have some questions, Mr. Solicitor, about the memo of understanding which we're voting on today. On the second page, by the way, on, are you there, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at, um, the resolution by the city of Williamsport and NFPTN's agreement of sale, just so, you know, for ease of understanding, there's multiple E and Fs. On the first page, at the bottom, you have an E and an F and then you have E and an F again up there on the second page. Beneath the now therefore paragraph, the language reads, you see where it says now therefore under number two consideration?
Yes.
So the language reads equivalently valued parcels of land and/or parcels of land that have equivalent value to the respective parties. So how did, how did, uh, I think Mr. Wiley put this together, I don't know if you were involved in it also. How did they come to...
On a limited basis.
What's that?
I was involved on a limited basis.
Oh, okay, well, hopefully you can answer the questions, if not, we can... How, how did he and Mr. Lubin come to define the terms equivalently valued parcels?
My understanding, Commissioner, is the county had an appraisal, uh, the city, uh, used assessment office records because they did not want to, uh, engage, if you will, an appraisal. And the, the two values that they determined using those sources were equivalent, not identical, but equivalent.
So when you say that the county had an appraisal on which land?
On Executive Plaza.
Okay. All right. So in other words, those terms refer to an appraisal that the county had on Executive Plaza and the city didn't wanna pay for an appraisal on the Third Street parking garage?
That's my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay. No, I think, and I think that's the understanding that was conveyed to Norm Lubin and then it was conveyed to, um, the city council, the mayor. So, in fact, there's an appraisal on the Third Street parking garage and I'll get to that a little later. There's no appraisal on the land under Executive Plaza. The appraisal is on the land under, under the Third Street parking deck. I thought that's why they had done what you described.
Well, I, I guess I flipped it. I knew that there was an appraisal.
Yeah.
And I, I guess, what you're clarifying now that the appraisal was on the parking deck, so what the city did was utilize the tax assessment value for the Executive Plaza piece.
The city, okay, used the tax assessment value.
I mean, I, I, the, the, the city did not want an appraisal and I think it was on there, I, I, I initially thought it was Executive Plaza, again, I haven't been intimately involved with this. Uh, but if you're saying that there was an appraisal on the parking deck, then that is the appraisal and there wasn't an appraisal as such on the Executive Plaza piece and the city relied on the tax assessment office determination of fair market value for that property.
Of the land? Like, we're, we're talking just the land, right? Not the buildings?
I think we are talking about both. I, I, honestly, Commissioner...
I know. I don't wanna put you on the spot, Mr. Smith. That, my, my point today isn't to put you on the spot, it's to try to highlight some of the things that we need to think about, all of us, not, not pointing any fingers or anything. But, so let, let me go on because I, in fairness to you, I, I get that you, you didn't negotiate the agreement. Uh, by the way, just parenthetically, I think one of the problems with the way we all handled this, and I include myself, is that we kinda turned this over to the lawyers to negotiate a document and it might've been more fruitful and helpful if the principals, meaning the three commissioners, the mayor and city council, had all sat together to have a conversation about it because, uh, I think there's been a lot of, uh, misunderstanding on, on all sides. So, going on to the docu, this is just, again, this is just a, um, I just wanna make sure, in paragraph six, eight and nine of the document, unfortunately, there's no page numbers on the document, they refer to inspection of property and I think, so they define the, the real estate as county real estate and city real estate and then they switch to the word property and I think this is probably because they used a form contract. But I assume when they say property, cause they don't define property in the contract anywhere, I assume when they say property, they're meaning both parcels. So, but so for example... What's that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Cause, so for example, in, in, paragraph nine, possession, which is one, two, three, well, it's actually one, two, it's on the seventh page. It says possession of the property shall be transferred by city to county at the time of closing. What's missing is a paragraph that says possession of the property shall be transferred by county to city at the time of closing also. In other words, both properties are gonna transfer, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Do you think it's necessarily added or not?
Um, Commissioner, all I can tell you is that this agreement has been...
Vetted.
Back and forth, it's been vetted. Uh, I know Mr. Wiley looked at it very carefully, I know Mr. Lubin looked at it very carefully. It's been approved by city council, so I am assuming that this, um, this instrument has been through the appropriate channels and has the appropriate language. I, I can't comment beyond that.
No, I understand.
And I just checked to see, because I checked to see if, uh, Mr. Wiley's available. He unfortunately is in a, a deposition in a county-related matter.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So I can't inter, can't interrupt.
Okay. That's no problem. In paragraph eleven E, um, there's language that says, while not a pre-closing condition, the county agrees to maintain the parking lot presently on the city real estate that services, like, how many can executive plaza building, open for public use. The term not a pre-closing condition, what do you interpret that to mean in the context of our responsibility to keep the five to seven, uh, seven thirty to five thirty, uh, the hours afterwards?
The, the one thing I can tell you, Commissioner, is that when this was originally presented to the commissioners and it, uh, did not pass, that there was further discussion, uh, including with Mr. Wiley and Mr. Lubin, uh, who reported, Mr. Lubin reported to his principals and the request was that the conditions in terms of the lot being available to the public after business hours, uh, which were already in the agree, that condition was already in the agreement of sale would actually be included as the deed restriction on the transfer of the parcel, uh, to the county. So, I, I'm not quite sure what the particular language that you're talking about means other than I know that that condition will be a deed restriction in the transfer.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. In paragraph E, uh, eleven F, it says, the parties agree that there may be non-real estate related terms under a lease agreement for the parking deck that parties agree need to survive closing. But there's no reference to what these non-real estate related terms are. In other words, we're, we're voting on something that references, um, another document or, or terms, but we don't, it doesn't specify what they are.
And, and I'm not sure what those terms are, but because the county is transferring that property, I'm not, I'm not quite understanding what your concern is, cause that, that property will no longer be the county's property.
Well, there is a lease that existed between the county and the Williamsport Parking Authority that was executed on September twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-eight. That was based on an MOU from February eighteenth of nineteen ninety-eight. And in that agreement between the parking authority and the county, it said that there was a ninety-nine year lease that the county had on the Third Street parking deck, just like, I'm sorry, that the, uh, yeah, there was a ninety-nine year lease. And the county executed the lease with the parking authority for a hundred parking spaces for the county. I don't see an extinguishment of that. This document extinguishes the lease that is on the parking gar, uh, lot right outside of our office. It specifically said that that lease is extinguished. I don't see an extinguishment of the lease having to do with the other one and I'm wondering if the parties intended to do that but didn't put it in the document, or if it's in the document and I have missed it. And again, I found something that...
I can't answer that, I, I...
Yes.
I cannot answer that, Commissioner.
Okay. So in paragraph twenty-one, there's a covenant not to record. It says neither county nor city will record this agreement and any recording of this agreement by county or city will constitute a default by county or city if applicable under this agreement. Do you have any idea why we wouldn't wanna record this?
Well, because agreements of sale, uh, as a matter of routine are not recorded, uh, Commissioner.
Okay.
They, the, the deed conveying the actual deal, the closing, if you will, those are always recorded, but the instruments leading up to that event, I, I don't think are recorded at all. As a matter of fact, I don't know, ever been recorded.
Well, the only reason, the only reason I mention it is, you're absolutely right, in a private sector agreement, you, we wouldn't necessarily wanna record it. They, if you think about how long it took us to unravel this problem where we didn't realize that the parcels were connected, it may actually be for the sake of, of, of the people who come after us, helpful to actually record the MOU so that it's, it's explained as to why, um, why things were done. So, just to give you an example, the, the, um, some of the other, uh, while they were lease agreements were recorded. So, in any event, that's something, I guess, that Mr. Wiley, I understand you saying. So then I, I, I asked about extinguishing or terminating the lease between the city and the county, um, and where, where we extinguish that and I'm wondering if that's one of the terms referred to. So to summarize the terms of these two parcels, three thirty Pine Street has a land area of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen. One fifteen West Third Street, which is the parking deck, has a land area of twenty-eight oh seven nine. There's no appraisal that I can find on the land under Executive Plaza, although it was purchased for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars on March twenty-seventh... although it was purchased for $560,000 on March 27th, 1987. The appraised value of the Third Street parking deck land is $400,000. And the entire garage was assessed at $2,507,000. That's the entire garage. So basically, we know that the appraised value of the county's land in $2021 is less than the value of the city purchased in 1987, 34 years ago. In other words, the appraisal that we have of the land today of $400,000 for the county's land under the parking deck is less than what the city paid for this parcel 34 years ago. They paid $560,000. And actually, if we took the 1987 purchase price that the city paid for the land, even with a 2% increase per year, the value today would be $1,104,746. The city elected officials, the mayor and the city council have stated that they had an opportunity to review the information required to make an informed decision. So I'm comfortable with voting, but I think that there are a lot of issues that are open and that there are a lot of issues that really are not resolved, both in the language of the document itself and in the, in the action, the transaction. I don't think they saw, I know they didn't see the appraisal we have on the Third Street parking deck. Because they said they never saw an appraisal, and yet there is an appraisal. And what I can't understand is why they never saw it. I think it's, it's nothing that anyone was hiding. I think it's just, it's just, this is what I meant by it would have been better if we had all gotten together and sat around and exchanged the documents and so forth. So there seems to be a, a feeling among everybody that the deal is, is, is a fine and equitable deal. And, you know, if, if, if people feel it's a fine equitable deal, I, I, you know, I'm concerned about, about all these questions, both in the language of the document and in the, and in the actual value. Maybe sometimes people have values of different things that, you know, they mean something has more value or equivalent tends to mean that they have similar values. So.
Commissioner, I'm confident that all these issues have been vetted and addressed. I'm sorry that I don't have the details at hand. I will assure that, assure you that Mr. Wiley, when he is available, will contact you and answer any questions that you have to give you whatever comfort level you might need, assuming that you still have issues after this matter is voted on.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with that. And if, if my colleagues feel like they want to go ahead today, I'm not going to hold up the vote on this. I, I do think that there are a lot of open questions. And I don't think that they're equivalent values. That doesn't mean that for whatever reason, people might not decide they want to vote for it. But at least we should go into voting for it with an open understanding of what's going on. You know, I mean, it, it, it made, I was trying to figure out, how do you compare these parcels? And then I realized we had appraisal on the one-on-third of $400,000 that, that the county owns. And we have a purchase price 34 years ago on this one. Now, it's possible that in the 34 years, this thing has declined in value. I mean, in other words, I gave you an assumption of 2% a year, it's worth over $1 million today. I guess if I went out and found a developer and said to him, listen, we've got a parcel downtown with a parking lot, what are you willing to pay for it? Even without the building? But, but in any event, I, I raised the issues. I, I hope that, you know, my colleagues will think about that when we vote and then.
Anything else?
No.
Commissioner?
So, you know, just let me, let me ask you. Do you believe that there was avoided transparency in this?
I think that there was a lack of it due to timing. I think what happened is that the, the document, the document went over there. And with all COVID and everything, it was literally sitting around for a long time.
So, so.
Well, wait, let me just answer your question. And I, I don't know that there was intentional, I'm not alleging that there was intentionally an effort to deceive them. I think that if I had said to you yesterday, you know, do you know whether there's an appraisal on the county thing over there? Would, would you have said, yeah? I didn't, I forgot it. I went through the entire file last night. I went through the entire file, reading every document. And all of a sudden, I said to myself, my God, we had an appraisal on the thing. And, and the people said to me, there was no appraisal, there was no appraisal. I think, Mr. Smith, with all due respect to you, I think what you said at the beginning is probably more accurate, that they, that there was appraisal. They knew we had done an appraisal on this building. What they didn't know is that we'd done an appraisal on the other one, on the land. So it wasn't an intentional question, an intentional effort to try to hide things. It was that with all the stuff that we all have going on, this stuff got, got buried. And that's all, that's all. But listen, they, they've had it, you know, they've had it informed twice. So be it. It's not, you know, it's not like anybody's being murdered. I just think that it's hard for the city taxpayers. We, we know how difficult it is for the city.
But whenever, whenever transparency comes up like this, you know, negative thoughts happen. You, you, you think that something, someone's deceiving somebody. So I would ask my, my colleague not to, not to always go to the transparency issue because when I found out about it, I thought, what, what the heck's going on here? But anyway, do you believe that the city's getting a raw deal?
I think that the city is not getting as good a deal as they deserve. I think that the value of what we have here on the parking lot in this is more than the value of the land under the Third Street deck. I hope that as we move forward with the city, where we try to cooperate, and we've been great working with them and cooperating with them, they will keep that in mind. That's all. And, and recognize that, that the rest of the county taxpayers are getting a benefit from, from the city.
So you're Commissioner Maribito, and I would, would hope that you represent the county and its interests before you represent any other entity.
Well, the citizens of the city are residents of the county.
I, I'm.
So they are constituents that we all three represent. And so we have an obligation to them as residents of the county. Yeah, absolutely.
So for the most part.
My job isn't, my job isn't to, I don't believe, my job is to make sure that I, you know, have one part of the county being taken advantage of by another part. And I don't think that's what you're implying, because I don't think you would do that either.
So for the most part, county commissioners agree, probably 90, 95% on everything. I mean, we get along for the most part. We have our arguments. And, you know, there are some things that we don't understand why sometimes we do some of the things that we do. And this happens to be one of them. So I want this in for the minutes. In 2011, I made a commitment to the taxpayers of Blackcoming County that as a commissioner, I would divest in the land and buildings owned by the county that were not being utilized for the common good of our taxpayers. The county sold one house in these 10 years, 26 acres at the landfill, and we plan on selling more. Maybe 16 acres at the Lysop View. And now we would like to sell the Executive Plaza. Currently, the city owns the land under the Executive Plaza and the parking lot. Both are being utilized by county government. The county would receive more money for the sale of this building if the county owned both the land underneath it and the parking lot alongside of it. This would benefit the county taxpayers as well as the city. By selling Executive Plaza, we are placing that valuable property back on the tax rolls. On the 29th of June, two days before I left for vacation, that was 2021, I asked Commissioner Maribito if I needed to call in for the public meeting being held on August 3rd. He assured me that the schedule was light and that everything would be okay, so go enjoy yourself, which I did. That day, I happened to go play some golf. Imagine my surprise when I found out that he voted against the land swap agreement. Why would a commissioner be making phone calls to the city council members that have already agreed to the land swap unless he was trying to sabotage this agreement, which was beneficial for the county government? Commissioner Medsger could have postponed the agenda item, or Commissioner Maribito could have tabled this vote for another two weeks until all three commissioners were in attendance. If Commissioner Maribito was concerned about the city more than the county, let me remind him that protections would be put in place so that the parking lot was available to the downtown merchants at no cost. And the courts would also have a place to park for the judges and other county employees in perpetuity. I have been working on this agreement with the past mayors and city council members for over five years. After exploring many options, which we have discussed, we finally got an agreement with the current mayor and city council. I want to extend my sincerest gratitude to Mayor Slaughter and to all of city council for reciprocating goodwill between the commissioner's office and the city of Williamsport. The commissioner's office recognizes the importance of this partnership. We understand how difficult it is for the elected officials running third-class cities all across this great nation. In the past, commissioners have supported our county seat, which is Williamsport, in many ways. We implemented our narcotics enforcement unit, which helped the Williamsport Police Department in fighting crime in Williamsport. And that is probably running county taxpayers approximately $500,000 a year. We helped fund a water relocation project at the YMCA for a tune of about $400,000, which made that project happen. We provided $100,000 for the Reach Road Project. I'm, I'm sorry, a million dollars for the Reach Road Project. We donated $100,000 to the Spillman Records Management Program for the police department. And although the county had no dog in the fight, we assisted Williamsport, South Williamsport, Loyal Sock, and O'Leary Coming with the levy projects that will cost the county taxpayers millions of dollars. There are many more kind gestures made by former and current commissioners. And I believe that the public understands the value of intergovernmental agreements that benefit the public as a whole. I can assure you, the mayor and the city council have made a good decision. And I thank them for their understanding of how important this agreement was for the taxpayers of Blackcoming County.
So I have to tell you, I am, I am not, I'm not surprised, but the ad hominem attacks that you made continue to amaze me at your ability to avoid the issue and attack the person. Whether you asked me about coming to the meeting on June 28th or August 3rd, first of all, I have no recollection. And secondly, it isn't really relevant to the issue. You're on vacation. I don't have an obligation to table a matter. It came up for a vote and I voted no. The truth is that the issue is that this property is worth more than the other property. If city council and the mayor have chosen to swap it, that's their business. But at least the public should know what the facts are. That is what transparency is about. Transparency is about putting the facts out there, letting the chips fall where they may. And the fact that we, as county commissioners, or you as a county commissioner, put various funds into the third-class city that is the heart of this county, because quite frankly, without Williamsport, we know the levy. We learned from the levy experience that 80% of the tax revenue for the entire county comes from the area behind the levy, the city of Williamsport. The major employment center is the city of Williamsport. So while you think that those things are done simply to benefit the city, they're actually done to benefit this county because thousands of people drive into this city every day from parts of the county to work at Penn College, at Blackcoming College, at UPMC and the other places. So the point is that we take votes, we make things transparent, but we don't do it in a rushed manner. And that, literally, what happened in that last meeting two weeks ago was that the document, which is right here, was given to us two minutes before the meeting started. And I said that, Commissioner Medsger said, well, we've been looking at it. But there's a difference between looking at it and getting the final document. So in any event, I'm not going to dwell on it. I, I'm disappointed that, given an opportunity to see something with transparency, the approach would be to make ad hominem attacks on the person. But it's, it is what it is. So anyway, that's what, and I'll, Mr. Smith, I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Wiley offline about some of these language issues in the contract.
I strongly urge that, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would. I would. And I, and I, and I have every right and responsibility to call members of city council and ask them if they saw an appraisal. And if I think there was appraisal done, but I haven't been able to locate it, but I don't call them and tell them that, then I think I'm not doing my job as an elected official to be transparent. Because the last thing I would want people to do is to say that they did something, they voted on it without seeing the information.
How many meetings do you think we've had prior? And how far back do you think we had prior to this?
We never met with city council, the mayor specifically on this, the three of us. We never sat down with them.
I didn't ask you that question.
No, I know, but that to me is part of what went wrong. We didn't sit down as a group and say, hey, guy.
But we did. We had many conversations with.
We had conversations off, we had conversations on the fly. Like they're coming over some other thing and we said, hey, did you get that MOU for this?
But for years, it wasn't just, this was, this was not a rushed document. This was not something rushed. We've been working on this for, and you've been, you've been with us for.
I, I, I told you, I have the file and I went back to 2019 and I know that.
But why did we do that in our meetings when we were talking about? Why, why did it all of a sudden come up to a rule?
Did you two know there was an appraisal under Third Street parking deck?
There was, on the Third Street.
You did? What's the value of it?
$400,000. We knew that. They knew that.
They didn't know that.
Yes, they did.
They told me they weren't shown an appraisal.
Well, it, it doesn't.
Listen, Mr. Lubin told me it wasn't shown an appraisal. He said they weren't shown appraisals. They were not shown the documents. That, that, that's a fact. I mean, they, well, I shouldn't say it's a fact, it's what they told me. They were not shown an appraisal.
This was ordered in February of 2020. You knew it was ordered. We all ordered it. We paid for it. The bottom line of this here, there's nothing, there's no lack of transparency here. I, I agree with Commissioner Missar. When you throw that term out, it makes it sound like we're deceiving someone. We're deceiving no one here. No one. I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to different council members. They said the county did their homework on this. That was exact quote from them. The county did their homework on this. They did a great job. If anything, they felt maybe they didn't do their homework completely. And that's on them. That's on them.
I thought they did their homework.
I thought they did. But one council member told me if anybody should be pointing fingers, it should be them pointing fingers at us. And I won't point fingers at them because I think they did their homework. I think they, they did what they needed to do to make this a reality. They understand how important this is to the entire county, not just the city, the entire county. Let me finish, please.
Yeah, please do.
So we have too much real estate in this county. We know it. We have an opportunity to finally sell a building and go over across the street and occupy a building that we should be occupying, which we paid too much for that building. occupy a building that we should be occupying, which we paid too much for that building, which we'll never be able to sell, which we all would agree on. So we have an opportunity here to finally do this deal. It's been kicked around for years, years. This isn't the Grand Canyon out here. This parking lot is not the Grand Canyon. It's a parking lot. The city's getting a better deal to own the property underneath a parking deck that they're making money off of right now. They're making money off that property. It enhances their value of their own property by inheriting, in the swap, the land that now goes with it. That $400,000 it was appraised for now goes and makes their property worth more. We put in the MOU, which we were ever concerned that this lot stays open a night for the city, for the businesses. We write that into the MOU, we write it into the deed for the new owner. The solicitors looked at this, they researched it, they went back and forth for over six months in the final documents. They tweaked it, they sent it back and forth. The council had it, they had a chance to look at it, they looked at it, the mayor looked at it. The mayor called me after the meeting at the end of July and said, what in the world happened? You guys come to us with a proposal to help you. We turn around and say, yes, to help you. At the same time, you're helping us. You're giving us a piece of land that is enhancing the value of something that we're already making money off of. And you turn around and say, no? He was flabbergasted. So I want to thank the mayor for doing the right thing and the council for doing the right thing. They did their homework. You had some concerns, and they understood those concerns, and they went back and they looked at those concerns. Okay? And their concerns have been satisfied, in their opinion. And there's no sense in continuing to beat a dead horse that's already been beaten down. And there's no sense in continuing to raise red herrings that don't need to be raised. The city, in your opinion, you...it's against your opinion, and you're entitled to your opinion, Commissioner. What that property, you might feel is not as much as this property, and that's your opinion. That's solely what it is, is an opinion. We have a 7-0 vote in city council, we have a mayor, and we have this board of commissioners to make a decision on whether the land swap's a good land swap. I think it's a good swap because it's fair, it's equitable, and at the same time, it puts this property back on the tax rolls, which this city desperately needs. And it puts us across the street in a consolidation building, so we start moving forward to do better business as a county. And it shows a partnership between the county and the city that we can actually get things done instead of talking about it for years and years and years, which people are tired of. They're so tired of it.
Can I say that? You know, sometimes commissioners have to make decisions, and sometimes we say things that can be misconstrued, okay, or misunderstood. And when I read some of the articles in the paper regarding this issue, I'm positive that you didn't have any malice or intentions of embarrassing anybody. But when you make those statements, that they didn't know what they were doing, or just today, I mean, to me, I could perceive that you're questioning the attorneys. If we have questions like that, it should be behind the closed doors, so that nobody feels bad about a deal, okay? Or that we don't embarrass people, or we don't embarrass ourselves. And we should really work these types of negotiations out in detail. I agree with you. And I would put an amendment to that agreement, that it is written correctly. But the protections are there, and that's the most important, that's the most important part of the agreement, that this parking lot continues to be a place where county employees, some of the county employees, can park, or courts, and that it's open for business after 5 o'clock. It's open. Our downtown merchants need this, free of charge, doesn't go to the private sector. Okay?
And that was a concern of the city's...
Right.
That's being addressed.
Which, you know, it's very important. So, you know, I made my apologies to a number of the city council people and the mayor and the attorneys, and I hope we, in the future, you know, you don't have to air out everything in the public. You have to work it out and then bring it to a vote.
Well, I think that we're again mixing apples and oranges here. There's no indication that I have tried to hold up for five years or do anything to not sell this building. Commissioner, what you're learning is that it takes time to do things in government, just like it took ten years for Ms. Shannon Rosman brought us the repair of the water main over there in Mosquito Valley, which has more high importance than this, and yet it took ten years to get things done. And that doesn't mean that, it should take ten years, and it doesn't mean that it should take us long to do things, but the reality is that it does. Unfortunately, you guys sometimes can't read through the lines of what I write for you. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that if seven members of council and the mayor are happy with what they've done, that's fine, that's great. All I'm saying is that we shouldn't kid ourselves about whether there was transparency. There was not transparency when people did not get to see appraisals. Period, amen. There was not transparency when documents are presented two minutes before, regardless of how long people have talked about them. There's a difference between seeing a final document and seeing drafts of documents, because at the end of the day, it's the final one that matters. All the drafts in the world don't matter. And thirdly, that I don't think anybody's committed a heinous or venal sin here. I don't think the three of us have, and I don't think the city council and the mayor have. And I don't think that there's, you know, I believe our job is to air things publicly, is to put it out there for the public to understand, so the public can hold us accountable. And we ought to be able to defend what we do. If we do all those things, then we can defend what we do. However I vote on this today, I feel very defensible about how the vote is, and I'm sure that you feel the same way, you know? So we don't have to get things, get ourselves upset over differences of opinion. What we do need to do is to make sure that we do things in a way that there's enough time for people also to digest what's going on. So that's where I'm at.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner, appreciate your passion. But this isn't my first rodeo.
Oh, I don't say it was.
I've been in county government for 32 years. I understand government moves very slowly. I understand sometimes it snails pace, but I also understand that there's a time for everything, and there's unnecessary delays. And this has been delayed for whatever reason, and it's been vetted. It's been vetted, and it's been done so properly.
So do you realize, you don't know this, because you don't have notes from the meetings, Commissioner McKernan and I wanted to sever this parking lot and sell this building and the land under it in 2019. And the notes in the meeting, Mr. Masser opposed it.
I'm aware of that.
He wanted to keep the parking lot with it. We could have actually sold this building back in 2018, 2017, 2016, I forget when it is. I have the notes, I read them last night. Commissioners McKernan and Maribito would like to sever it and sell the land and the building immediately, and Commissioner Masser opposed it. And so part of the delay in opposing it has allowed the circumstances to change, there's now another person who's willing to keep it. Nobody's opposed. Honestly, the quickest way to get this deal would have been done for us to come in, say to the city, we're going to pay to sever the parking lot, we will pay the $3,000 or $4,000, we'll sever it. Boom. Swap the land, boom, everything's done. City, you still own that parking lot, we still rent it from you for a buck a year. So anyway, we don't need to beat a dead horse. Things don't have to take a long time. They take a long time because people have differences of opinion, and sometimes they wait until the votes are there for something to be done. So be it.
Okay. Any other comment at this time?
Anything online?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the agreement of the sale between Lycoming County and the city of Williamsport on the land swap with Executive Plaza?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Snatches. 3-0 vote, so carried.
And what I'd like to do is to make sure we get these things correct, you know, try to get them corrected, to the extent they're necessary. If it's not necessary to correct them, we won't do that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any...
Do you have Commissioner comments?
Commissioner comments at this time? We have public comment at this time?
Yeah, online.
Yes.
We have someone else?
Yes. Just come up. Thank you for being here.
My name is Karen DeSalvo. I'm a resident of Lycoming County, not a resident of the city of Williamsport. I don't mean to further beat your dead horse, but I did want to say just a few things. One is, you were elected to represent the county. I know that the city is part of that, but not all of your constituents within Lycoming County live in the city of Williamsport. I want to make that point first. Second thing I want to say is that from a legal perspective, all of the, both of the parties in this were at arm's length at all times. So attorneys were involved in the process on both sides, and my understanding is that city council voted unanimously in favor of the land swap. And so those are important points, and I think that you throw the word, you bandy this word transparency about, but the party stood at arm's length, and attorneys were on both sides, as I said, so I think that's kind of disingenuous. And then, because you invited comment on Beth Baylor's proposal, I just wanted to comment on that. First of all, as a taxpayer, I want to say how grateful and thankful I am that the number of overtime hours worked by such a small number of employees is absolutely impressive, and I'm very grateful for that. And I wanted to say that proper staffing at the 911 center is absolutely crucial, and based upon the amount of training that it takes to get your employees up to speed, retention is absolutely vital. And so I think that the proposal that was made by Beth Baylor to pay what you were really referring to as retention bonuses is an absolutely excellent idea. And also, I think these sign-on bonuses to get employees interested, it should happen immediately, because if it takes 10 to 12 months to get an employee up to speed, then you need to implement a program like this as soon as possible. So I wanted to say, as a taxpayer, I'm very grateful and I'm in support of your proposals that you presented to the commissioners today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comment?
Online, Carla Miller, great presentation, Beth. Every ounce of what she said is true. 911 dispatchers don't get paid enough. She also said, I have been wanting to work in the 911 center. However, I am employed with the county, so I can't. I am a trained telecommunicator and can't help.
What she's referring to is DORA.
Okay.
Carla lived with us for years.
Yeah.
And then went, transferred downstairs.
Correct.
Which is a policy issue we need to take a look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then MC Green says, it is unfortunate that the lawyers did not get the written agreement to the commissioners in a timely fashion. The devil is always in the details. And that's all the comments.
Thank you. Okay. Today's Commissioner Maribito's birthday. I'd like to wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you, Brian.
We should sing "Happy Birthday."
That's okay. Nice of you to get that cake, Commissioner. I invite you all upstairs to have some of it.
And I thank everyone for attending the meeting, and wish everyone good health. We will be adjourned to our next meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, 17th, next Tuesday at 17. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Commissioner Maribito.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it. Tell Mr. Wiley, when he has a chance, we can talk on that. I'd like to talk to him. All right, I have a 12 o'clock, just down this way.
Happy birthday.
So thank you. Please go up and have a seat. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will you have a seat? Yeah, later. I've got to, I've got to get to a 12 o'clock. Thank you both for coming.
Thanks.
Oh.
Thanks.
So the appraisal for the, you're saying appraisal for the way...
Yeah.
Was it... He's for... Or was it...